Good evening, everyone. We're ready to call the meeting order. Thanks for those that have showed up tonight. I'd like to start by saying this meeting takes place in the traditional and ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people. We are all treaty people. There are no additions or deletions to the agenda. So we'll move on to 4.1. That committee of the whole approved the agenda for the April 29th, 2025 meeting as presented. Is someone prepared to move that? Moved by councillor Strong. Is there a seconder? By councillor Fullerton. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carry unanimous. There are no presentations. There's no business arising from the minutes. So we're going to go on to number seven. So before we start, I'm going to explain to the big gallery how this works. Just so we're all clear. Normally, we'd have public presentations now. But what we're going to do is we're going to do the budget process first between staff to give each report and council a chance to ask questions. And then when we're all done, we get down to eight. Public can have their input at that time. They can either ask questions, they can give us suggestions, ideas, whatever. And then we'll try to have them answered tonight, or we'll get back to them at a later date with an answer or a response. And basically, that's how we'll proceed. If you're watching from home and you watched the budget presentation tonight and have some comments or questions or concerns, you're more than welcome to email them into the tab. We'll get back to you that way. So this is one of, one of three so far that we have scheduled budget meetings. So I guess the old saying goes, now is the time to have your say. So we'll move on to 7.1, the draft general capital budget. So who's doing that? Kathleen?
So Kayla, next slide. Staff have prepared a draft capital 2025 town capital budget for council's review. To assist council with the review of these documents, staff will provide an overview of the projects included in the 2526 draft town general capital budget as of this evening. The 2526 capital projects for the town general are 4.69 million and are funded as outlined on the, so we have 993,000 for fire this year. Public Works Infrastructure and Equipment is 720,000. Wastewater with the exclusion of the water treatment plant upgrade is 782,000. Community Development at 425 and Town General at 1.77 million for a total of 4.69 million. And the way that we are going to, we're proposing to fund that, next slide, is that the Fire District will be paying for half of the fire truck at 429. The Canadian Community Building Fund is at 520,000, and that's a grant that we receive to be utilized for capital purposes only. Our capital reserve will be utilizing 525,000 of that. Grants and donations in the amount of 540,000. Detransfer tax in the amount of 661,000. Debt of 1,469,000 and our operation reserves of 546,000. With this new debt added on to our current debt ratio, we will be at approximately 7.4%. When you add on the addition of the wastewater treatment plant, we will be at about 10%. Now, those are estimates until we actually get to what we know that we have to borrow for the wastewater treatment plant that could either increase or decrease. Next slide. And I will now go through the reserves that we have on hand as of March 31st, 2025. And our salt reserve, and this is our operating reserve. So operating reserves are funded by transfers from council that are discretionary. So council can designate funds to be utilized for any purpose. And when, and they set it up for a special purpose reserve. So salt reserve is if we have a really heavy year that we don't have to actually rate for that because we've put some money aside previously. So the salt reserve is at 52,000. Fire personal protection equipment, we have a reserve established that will be utilized for fire protection equipment for our firefighters. This year, we're at 75,000. You'll see an increase being proposed of an additional $12,000 from the Fire Department reserve accounts this year, which will enable us to actually replace the equipment in the year that's required. And we have the full reserve. Our sewer reserves are at 736,000. And those are the general reserves that we have. And that's part of the monies that are charged for the sewer rates are put aside in this reserve for general projects. If we have a sewer pump station that has a pumping issue, we have the funds to actually replace it rather than having to come back and ask council for a borrowing on a project like that. Sewer reserves, plant upgrade. When we were modeling what the plant was going to cost and the offsetting sewer fees that were required to support that, 286,000 was estimated to be the amount of principal and interest that we were going to have to put aside, or we were going to have to pay on each year. So initially, when the sewer reserves were established, we started putting that money, those monies away that year. So currently, we have 858,000. And with the addition that we're putting in it this year, we'll have about 1.1. And when we go to borrow, that will reduce the borrowing that we actually have to carry. Under our sewer reserves biofilter media, we have, we, part of our odor control at the wastewater treatment plant is the media that is actually in the biofilter. This year is the scheduled year for replacement. So the 74,000 that we've put aside will be used to offset the cost of the media that has to go in to the plant. And Tyson will elaborate on that later. The recreation reserve is at 62,000. Our pro kids grant is at 32,000. That is utilized for different programs for children within our area that perhaps their, their family may have challenges on being able to send them to specific programs. So we have this grant established for that. Operating reserve general, we have $305,000 in that reserve. And our operating surplus reserve, we have 196,000. That surplus reserve is if you have an operating surplus in the town operating fund, we are legislated to transfer it across to the operating reserve. So the total for the general operating capital reserves is 2.3 million. And our capital reserves for our, for the period ending March 31st, 2025. Other equipment, we have 1.1 million. This is for fire trucks and other equipment that we have, that we need, that are, we require to establish reserves so that we don't have to borrow at replacement time. Ice resurfacer reserve, we have 17,000. That's for building a fund for when the ice resurfacer has to be replaced. Public Works Equipment, and this is for the fleet that we have. It's used to finance small equipment as well as partial funding of trucks. Our fire equipment reserve is at 180,000 dollars. And these funds are if we sell something in relation to a truck or have donations made, that 180,000 is to be used for fire equipment only. The Building Canada Fund, formerly Gas Tax, we have 535,000 in that fund. And our deed transfer tax is at $1 million. So the total of our capital reserves is 2.9 million. This reserve, this reserve is one that you do not really have very much discretion as what you can use with this, use this money for. The municipal government act establishes what you're allowed to expend out of the capital reserve. It also tells you what you have to put in the capital reserve. So if you were to lose a building and you received insurance proceeds, that has to go into the capital reserve. The capital reserve, as well as the special operating reserve, both need, require council's approval to make any withdrawals. Next slide. And so now I'm going to pass the table over to Tyson, who will take us through the majority of the capital programs this evening.
Thank you, Kathleen. Good evening, council, mayor, everyone in attendance. So going through the town capital budget, we'll start with the town general section. So first project we're looking at is relating to this building, Town Hall. So this, this follows on from the recommendations from the building condition assessment that was presented to council a few months ago. For 2526, focusing on the roof repairs that were recommended. You can see from the spreadsheet, this would be the first year. And then there are other, other elements of those recommendations for following years. But the roof repair section, we're allowing for a budget of $700,000 for the roof repair. Essentially, it was based on the cost estimate that the consultant provided with some contingency in there as well. So next slide. So building improvements, moving on to the old fire hall. Again, piggybacking off the condition assessment, looking at the roof membrane removal and replacement. A proposed budget of $250,000 for that. The Lunenburg Academy, also looking at roof repairs. So common, common theme amongst the buildings. So the roof repair scope that we're looking at there is, is $750,000. As you'll see in the breakdown of the fiscal contributions, we've, there's potential partnerships to share that costs with us there. So the impact for the town itself would, would be $250,000. But project overall is 750. Also with the Lunenburg Academy, we, with previous meetings, we've talked about the, the options for the public washroom, where the budget work was done prior to bringing that report to council. We provisionally carried a $10,000 item for some site preparation costs there. Perhaps that's on hold at the moment while staff carries out the investigation. But was the motion moved by council following that, that for information report? Moving on to the, the programs the town runs. So we have the continuation of the urban forest. So the tree planting program, it was formerly known as. We have a budget of $40,000 to continue that program. And we have the interpretive panels for parks. This is a community development project. It would, the two parks, Sylvia Park and Labrador Park. So we have a budget of $20,000 for that item. So moving on to sidewalks, looking at a potential new sidewalk on Star Street. So this is following on from the proposed daycare site where there's no sidewalk available on Star Street. So this would tie into the existing network at Lincoln Street and run down to, to that daycare site, depending on, on the site layout that they, they eventually arrive on. So for this, this fiscal year, we're really just looking at the design and the preparation of the tender documents. So we've got a budget of $36,000 for that. And then you can see in the next year, we've got a potential project of a 390 or 400 meter sidewalk. We have a budget of $490,000 for that. But we're only looking to complete the design and the tender prep this year for the 36. So for street reconstruction and resurfacing, there was a project in the previous year that was deferred on Pelham Street. The first phases between King and Prince Street. So this would be a full street reconstruction, including the subgrade preparation, the base gravels and the asphalt. We talked about this overlapping with our PCAP request for the, the sanitary sewer main upgrade and the storm separation at, at last council meeting. So this, this would kind of be the, the top layer associated with that work. In terms of the street improvements, we have general accessibility improvements. So this would be things like improving ramps at sidewalks, new railings, those kinds of items. So we have a budget of $20,000 for that. The flashing beacon lights. This would be, this would be the carryover of the, the project that council approved last, late last year. So the budget of $44,000 is, is continuing the installation of those four sets that we've talked about previously. And then downtown traffic improvements, we have a, a budget of $50,000 there. So council has given us a couple of items to, to look into based on our discussion on the speed limit at council. Is that last meeting or the meeting before? So it's those kinds of items that we're looking at in that scope. For the public works equipment, we have the, the new salt truck, which is the replacement of the O9. So that RFP, that's a carryover project from last year's budget. So we have an amount of $250,000 for that vehicle. And then we have our miscellaneous tools budget for public works, which is a $20,000 budget. And that item's fairly consistent year over year. So moving on to wastewater components. Kathleen touched on the biofilter media. So those of council that, that participated in the site visit will, will remember that, that organic material that was outside that helps us with our smell or odor suppression. So it's, it's that organic material that, that has a certain lifespan. And then it needs to be replaced. So it's not the sort of thing that we want to, we want to get caught chasing that kind of item because most of us can, can probably recall how, how that was prior to that. So we have a budget of $170,000 to complete that work. And then we have our various items, which is upgrade and replace smaller capital items for the plant. So this would be things like probes and meters and laboratory items that, that our team uses to, to perform checks and balances. So a budget of $35,000 for those items. So with our, our storm system, we have the storm separation plan. And this, this project's already underway. So that, just to remind council, that's the project where we look at our storm system overall and come up with a master plan for our storm separation so that all the pipe sizes are complementary and coordinated for when we, when we can complete various storm separation projects. So a really important document for the town's long-term planning because that, that storm separation is, it's going to take many years to complete, I suspect. So for that all to be coordinated is very, very critical. So $127,000 for that. And then tying back to the road reconstruction project that, that we talked about previously. So this would be the storm separation for, for the section of Pelham Street between King and Prince. We're showing the project as two phases. But the first phase is King to Prince, and then Prince to Hobson would be the second, second phase. So a budget of $65,000. And that would be adding, I think it's 36 meters of catch basin leads, replacing the four catch basins that currently exist at Prince Street, and then a storm manhole, and then piping it down Prince towards Montague. So that when those future storm separation projects occur, then we can take, we're not digging this section of Pelham Street back up to add infrastructure. So moving on to the sanitary system. We have our Brook Street Station upgrades. So that there's, there's a few components to this work. Some of it would be performed in-house by Public Works. And that would be the exterior improvements. So refinishing of the building, replacing the shingles because it has deteriorated over time. There would also be an adjustment to the ceiling in there to allow better operation of the pumps and the system in there, providing some more room for the tools that are required. And then we also have the replacement of the piping that's in the wet well, where we've had, had some issues over the Manholes there as well. So that summarizes the public works section. I can, I can move on to the community development items as well, where, where Mark is, is absent this evening. So we have the, the bandstand restoration and accessible walkway. So this is a, a project that's been pre-approved by council. So we have the, the budget that's pre-approved of $345,000 for that item. With the recreation facilities, we have the baseball field repairs, which is a project that, that was looked at where a couple of years ago, there was, there was issues with flooding of the field along the, the third baseline there and left field. So looking at potentially adding storm, oh, sorry, drainage improvements to tie into the box, the Tannery Road box culvert. So a budget of $10,000 there. And that would be work that was performed by Public Works. And then at the community center, there's a, there's a number of projects. So we have the accessibility improvements at the entrance there. So a budget of $40,000. So my, my recollection is it's, it's sort of piggybacking off the improvements that were done at the rink. It's not exactly the same improvement, but it's looking for a similar impact to, to the community center as what exists at, at the rink there. So making the, the ramp a bit wider and adding some surfaces that are, provide a little more traction and some other items as well. We also have improvements to the community center exterior. So this is removal of the existing non-functioning doors that leads into the basement and filling that gap with concrete to prevent water ingressing into the, I guess it's the basement area. It's kind of used as a storage area under the community center there. And then we also have the refinishing of the gym floor. So my understanding is 15 years ago was when this was last attended to. So general repairs and replacements to boards, repainting lines and then adding the top, top coating there. So a budget of $10,000 for that item. So at this point, I'll hand it back to Kathleen for the fire department items.
So the next item is the GMC tanker, 2002 is being replaced. And it was approved in September 10th, 2024. The budget for this item is 798,000. And it is a replacement tanker for truck, for tank number six. The truck is on order and is anticipated to be received this fall. The cost is shared 50, 50 with the district. Next slide, Kayla. The fire rescue boat, number eight. The motor replace, for motor replacements. The fire rescue boat was purchased in 2016 and is 26 feet in length and is equipped to fight fires as it has, as it has a 450 gallon per minute pump. The two motors require replacement as parts are becoming hard to access. The $50,000 will be funded 100% by the Fire Department. And our final item is the Fire Department, the concrete apron replacement. The budget is 145,000. The concrete apron itself is crumbling and apart in the middle, and it extends across all four bay door entrances. There's a concern that if we were to have a fuel spill, that it would contaminate the ground underneath. So we are recommending this as one of our projects as well this year.
Thank you. So does anyone from council have any questions on the capital budget they'd like to fire away? Anybody? Deputy Mayor?
And just with determining what items make it to capital budget in one year. I see it's, um, looking, looking out for a five-year period. But I'm wondering, you know, how, how items get prioritized. When we were on the campaign trail, we heard lots about the need for safe pedestrian passageway from Centennial Avenue to James Road. It's currently a school bus stop. And it's quite heavily used by people of all ages. James Road is quite far developed since the original sidewalk that ends at Centennial was installed. And I know it's a tricky area because of the, the sightlines coming in from, you know, from Bridgewater, from Center and for South. But I'm, I'm wondering how we can, if there's a way to get on the list and get prioritized and what might have to be done to address that safety concern.
So through the chair, yes, very, very aware of that location. And Deputy Mayor is correct that the sightlines and sight distance to that location is a real hindrance to creating a safe crosswalk across Victoria Road. So that's, that's kind of the, from my understanding, Public Works looked at it even before I, I came to work at the town. And that was the recommendation. And that's, that's something that would take some, some further looking into in order to provide infrastructure that's, that's safe. Because even adding, adding flashing beacons and those kinds of things has the potential to make it safer, provided that every pedestrian uses it, provided there's no malfunctions when we're relying, like we're not, it's not just a nice to have potentially there. It's a, it's a must-have in terms of improving that. So if, if it's a priority for So um, if, if it's a priority for council staff, staff are happy to look into it further. Uh, it's just, it, it might not be a s- a small, as smaller project as it seems sort of at, at face value.
Yeah, thank you. If I could follow up through, uh, through you, the chair. Um, uh, yeah, I, I, I thought that I've been looking at it since um, it was brought to my attention. Uh, and um, I think the, the simple, um, or the immediate thought is that you continue the sidewalk. You know, from, from where it ends on, on the Centennial roadside. Um, but that's when your sightlines get lessened as you get closer to James Road. But um, if you cross at Centennial, um, and then make the sidewalk to James Road on the opposite side of the street, there seem, the sightlines seem to be much improved just from going through there myself and, and looking and seeing how far you can see and what the, the issues are. So, but it would definitely take, you know, study and, and, and you know, it's a steeper bank on that side and more complicated to put a sidewalk in for sure. So um, certainly from my perspective, um, I, I would lo- love to see it um, investigated at least at this stage. And I don't know what that means as far as um, budget implications. So I would, you know, need um, the support of my colleagues to request that of you. But um, that's, do you have a, a sense of what the steps would be? Is it something that staff could look into internally initially and then report back to us for perhaps a fu- future budget? Or what would you suggest?
Uh, through the chair, I think, I think it would need, need proper assessment as to what sight distance needed and then how we can get it. And then sort of a, potentially a high level look at, at what that, that impact would be. Because um, putting in infrastructure that, that, that um, that doesn't make it as safe as it needs to be, isn't something that I think any of us are looking at, at wanting to contribute here, right? So I think that would be a starting point, but in terms of, it's, it would just take, take some time to get to a point where we could be comfortable in terms of moving ahead with a, a capital project construction-wise. So it's probably in that similar, like we've got a thirty-six thousand dollar budget for the, the preparation of a sidewalk and um, and the tender documents potentially for Star Street. So it may not be thirty-six, but it's, it's probably, I would say in the, the twenty ballpark. Without understanding exactly what, what needs to happen, that, that's where my gut would put it.
Thank you. Any other questions, maybe? Councilor Daphne?
Through the chair, um, not really a question, kind of on the lines of the deputy mayor. I see Maple Avenue resurfacing not until twenty twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And I also know that the people that live along that road, um, I heard it as I was campaigning, not only about the road itself, but about a sidewalk too. And kind of what the deputy mayor said is, how do we prioritize that? Sort of thing. Cause for me, um, asking them to wait another two, three years seems kind of unfair to me.
So through the chair, in terms of uh, looking at the capital budget, we, we kind of built off last year's budget and have used that as, as our starting point. And then items that staff are aware of that need prioritization have come ahead. So that's, that's kind of our starting point. Like this five-year document isn't, isn't a brand new fresh document. It's something that for the last few years, we've tried to, to keep consistent unless we've been directed otherwise. So if council has different preferences, uh, that, that option for direction certainly exists. So um, that's, that's, but in terms of the explanation of, of how we, we got to this point that you're seeing tonight, that, that's largely the, the explanation.
Just a question. So my understanding was when that road was resurfaced or something done to it many moons ago, it was never put back complete is what the residents say in that area. Cause they had, they, at that time, they were expecting to do another part of a project in that area and it never materialized. So that, that's what we were told when we were campaigning. So that street was sort of put back, not a hundred percent originally. And they expected that to be resurfaced or redone, you know, sooner than what it is on the, on the, on the schedule right now. So I do know that it wasn't one or two. It was like everybody on that street on both sides that you knocked on. I mean, that is a bad street. So I, I guess we were told a week or two ago by the RCMP that it would be hard to reduce speeds on that street because it's a controlled access street. It's a shared street at coming into town. So if that's the case, if the province has input on what we can put as a speed limit and he's saying that have we ever went to the province on that section of highway? Cause that is a main artery into town, especially in the summer from Mahone Bay. They take the seaside route and come the old highway in Mahone Bay and they go across the Cut Bridge and come into Lunenburg. So I just wonder if we've looked into any type of funding on that area. Because, you know, to be honest, I never, I don't take that street a lot. I take the old Bridgewater Highway. But you really noticed it campaigning and you really heard it. And I don't know if two or three, I mean, two or three years aren't, isn't going to make it any better. I'll put it that way. Uh, so is there any like opportunities out there to, to get funding for it through levels of the province?
So through the chair, recently the, the province reached out and asked us about these, these roads that we, we share. So trunk three, which is, which is Maple, Falkland, Victoria, that loop. And then the other one I think is, it's Highway three, three, four, which is Darfran and then Sandy Hollow to where it hits Maple. So they asked us what our, our plans were there for potential cost sharing. Um, so at that time, we were in the previous fiscal budget uh, where I think Maple was on there, but it was, it was even further out than we're showing it at, at this point. So that was the information that we shared with the province at that time, that there was potential a resurfacing project there. Um, so we made that submission on behalf of the town. We haven't heard anything back. I think if, if that changes po- potentially, like we're showing in, in this draft of the budget, then we could, we could certainly update them on that. Um, so that would, that would potentially help us with the resurfacing. I don't think the province would be interested in cost sharing with, with the sidewalk that we've also talked about tonight. Because that, that was clear in, in the document that we got. Um, and it was just minor storm improvements. So um, but yes, we, we've already identified that to the, the province at a high level.
Thank you. Any other questions from anybody? Councilor Babina?
Uh, thank you. Uh, Tyson, uh, I'm seeing here under downtown traffic improvements, uh, Public Works working files. Can you just give me an example of what something like that would be?
So through the chair, um, downtown traffic improvement. So um, we talked about it, the speed reductions, the speed limit reductions that, that Public Works had looked at several intersections. And it could be potential improvements that, that was smaller scale that were recommended. Uh, we talked about, I think, the, the Pelham King intersection and how that would potentially benefit from being a, a three-way stop and some of the crosswalks, uh, like the bump outs to shorten them up and just make it a little bit safer. And there were some other items that were looked at there. Uh, so it's those kinds of smaller scale internal projects that, that we look at for the, for that. Um, is it, does that answer your question?
Any other questions? Councilor Daphne?
Through the chair, um, the arena compressor overhaul, uh, not for a few more years. I'm assuming the compressor has a, a use each life and that for warranty or maintenance or whatever, it's three or four years down the road.
So we do a rebuild on the compressors probably every three years. So this is a cyclical thing that we only budget for it when necessary.
Okay. And a question, and I know when we did the um, facility store at the fire department, I'm pretty sure Deputy Chief Rob told us. But the, the boat, the motor replacement, it's hard to get the parts and.
That is correct. They're having trouble, the, the motors are, are of an age that they can't find the parts for the bo- for the motors right now. So they're looking at using a provincial grant and some other fundraising that they've done to pay for them.
That, that's what I thought. Thanks.
Councilor Gray?
Through the chair, Kathleen, just to remind me, um, you mentioned at the start that uh, the debt would be at about seven percent and ten, including the wastewater, if I'm not mistaken. That upper limit, that's fifteen percent, is it? Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions?
And can I just make a comment on the debt? So when you're thinking of the debt ratio, that is at this point in time, because every year we pay down debt and our revenues increase. And so it's a moving, you know, it flow, it ebbs and flows. So it may, we're projecting that eleven would be our high, but the next year it could drop back down to nine or the following year, if we had a, a big expenditure, it could go back up to eleven. We're trying to manage it. And that's why we've done our reserve plannings like we have.
I have a question under recreation, if I may. There's been some talk, the fifty-five plus games is here in the fall. And they've been looking at our fields and I don't know how much staff is aware of that. But we were understanding, the deputy mayor and I, the, the track definitely needed some maintenance in order to be a player in that. So Kathleen, you put your hand.
There's actually ten thousand dollars in the operating budget to address that.
I thought I saw it somewhere, but I looked here and I couldn't find it. So I thought maybe I got mixed up with the floor refishing or something. No, great, because it would be great to be able to have that event here in town. So, no, thank you. Any other questions, concerns? Deputy Mayor?
More just, yeah, questions um, of interest, um, seeing the um, uh, you know, what's, what's happening and it's exciting actually. So, yes. Um, things like the um, the urban forest that's noted and that there's, um, you know, an ongoing uh, addition of funds to ensure that that continues. So is there a, is there a like a grand plan that we're following or are we just sort of replacing um, trees that uh, that uh, you know, have outlived their natural, you know, their life? Or, or how, how is that sort of determined?
Uh, through the chair. So uh, there's a number of different approaches that we've used in the time that I've been here. One, one year, we asked for expressions of interest from residents to have the town plant a tree within the street right of way that we would be responsible for. But it would help, help uh, help the street landscaping and, and configuration and um, also be of some benefit to them. Uh, there've been times where, yes, we've looked to replace uh, trees that have reached that time where there, there are safety issue or just not, not in, not fulfilling uh, the best objective for what we need. And then there's times where we've gone and planted trees in uh, in, on town property. Like there were several planted at the end of the tennis court last year and at Cove Park. And at least one on the, that, that, uh, that green area on the other side of Victoria Street to uh, to the tennis courts there. So it's, it's not any one approach that, that we look at.
Just one more thing about the bandstand. Um, I'm excited that that's going ahead too. And I guess I'm just, you'd noted, it's been noted that there would be improvements, um, not just a rebuild, but improvements to accessibility. Um, are there, do the plans um, address the accessibility issues that it has right now, I guess?
Through the chair. So the, the tender drawings that are out at the moment look at adding a ramp uh, that ties into the, the Ashfall pathway that, that connects Cumberland and Townsend uh, to provide improved access for accessibility. So it would, it uh, it's a ninety-degree turn uh, towards the UNESCO monument. And then it has a landing and then nineties onto the, the bandstand. So um, this certainly challenges with the topography there. I'll, I'll be honest. Uh, so it, but it does improve accessibility. And our access, accessibility coordinator, Ellen Johnson's been involved in the review. Um, so that aspect of it looks to improve. Um, it would replace essentially the steps that, that lead there now. So essentially everyone would be using the ramp. But um, that, that seemed, um, that didn't seem like a significant thing to give up to provide that accessibility portion. So.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Strong?
Um, I, I didn't hear during the presentation whether there was anything about the year one sign so uh, interpretive panels under the equity, diversity and inclusion. But I know that there is an application into Parks Canada and monuments, um, the monuments side of Parks Canada to update the town or to ask, we're asking for an update, I'm hoping. The motion still hasn't come forward again, or the report hasn't come forward from staff. And that would be something that experts from Parks Canada would be involved in. And I'm just wondering whether it should be carried in the year one line, since we don't know where that. I mean, we wouldn't want to develop panels that conflict with the research that Parks Canada ends up doing. I'm just thinking whether we need to look at that again, maybe when Mark's back or.
I guess we wouldn't, it, it wouldn't really, um, I understand what you're saying. And if the plan isn't in place this year, we could just defer it until next year. So that if you were fortunate enough to get your planning in place and wanted to implement them this year, the funding would be there.
And I'm assuming that that was actually probably year two or three of something from last year's budget. So that's understandable.
Anything else? I, I, I just have one more comment and it's just a, I guess, comment more so than a question. But I, I guess I struggle with the quarter of a million dollars on the old fire hall roof at this time. If we sitting around this table have no idea what we're going to do with that building. So I'd almost be more inclined to, to put out an RFI through then first ask Parks Canada what can actually go in that building? What's allowed and what's not allowed and put out an RFI, any interest and then look at spending money on it. I mean, that building's set there vacant now for four years. The previous council had plans, removed the tenants, the plans fell through. It's been sitting there vacant. Nothing's been spent on it really to talk about in the last three or four years. So it's, it's not in great shape. It's not as bad as I was led to believe it was. So it's it's not in great shape. It's not as bad as I was led to believe it was, but it's not in great shape. But I guess I I think this building's important to fix up. The Academy building's important to fix up. But I just don't know personally, if someone asked me what we think we might be putting in that building because we're spending a quarter of a million dollars on the roof, I don't know what we'd tell them. So is it? Do you think one more year, if we send in an RFI at this point, got requests for interest? Check with Parks Canada of what actually can and can't go in there and looked at a plan, a long-term plan for that building? Would putting off the roof one more year really make it any worse? I mean, for whatever reason, for four years and it's just forgotten about. So I just think quarter of a million dollars is a lot of money for a building. We don't have any plans for it. That's just my, I guess my question to Tyson.
Uh, so through the chair, the condition assessment just identified the the water coming in through the roof. So that's gonna generally lead to the deterioration. It also identified the structural steel. That's, um, that hasn't been done in the last few years, but my understanding is it's been done within the last ten. So it's it's just putting those existing components at risk and, um, so to answer your worship's question, probably a year isn't, isn't going to be the end of the world for that building, but it's not going to. It still will continue to deteriorate under the current conditions.
Thank you. I I realize if the roof, if your roof is leaking, if you don't fix it, you're not making your house or your building any better. I realize that everything around it, you know, deteriorates. I guess my thing is I think now that we know that if we're gonna spend a quarter of a million dollars, my point is if we're gonna spend a quarter of a million dollars on that roof, then the seven of us and staff have to really sit down with their thinking caps on and figure out what we're gonna do with that building in the following year. Because if we spend a quarter of a million dollars and it's still sitting there empty three years from now, it's not a great investment of money with other, you know, capital projects we have on the go. So I guess that would be my point to just to, you know, so that we all know around this table that that's something we should be, because alls I've heard for, you know, since I was elected was, well, nobody can go there. You can't rent it to anyone. Has to be certain this, has to be a certain that. Well, I don't think we really know what can and can't go there and we really have to find out and we really have to work at getting something in there. I mean, there are buildings across Canada in historical districts, maybe not in the civics clear, that they've allowed to repurpose buildings for housing, especially with the housing shortage. So maybe if you could repurpose that building into some type of like a more of affordable type housing, but leave the outside as is, let it look like it does now. I don't know if that's ever possible. I don't know if we've asked. But I think that's something we should be looking at in the in the not so distant future if we're going, especially if we're gonna invest a quarter of a million dollars on the roofs. That's my only concern. Any other questions or concerns or comments? Okay, okay, Counsel Strong.
I guess adding to that, um, I think that's pretty important. But having dealt with leaky roofs for most of my life as homeowners in various places, I think it is, we won't have any asset, I guess, is that it, or we will have less of an asset once that time comes that we've decided what we're gonna do with the building. But yes, I agree. I think there are funding opportunities that we should be looking at for affordable housing, at least upstairs in there. And I'm, I'm a hundred percent with that, but I do see the roof as an issue.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, we can move on to the seven-point two town general draft operating budget at this point.
You can to the next one. So our first slide of this evening, as we start our operating budget, is to speak about assessment trends. Property valuation services corporation, value properties based on market value, which is the value of a willing buyer would pay a willing seller on the open market. The market value for this year is based on the value of your property on January 1st, 2024 and on sales information from the 2023 calendar year. Residential and resource properties are eligible for cap. So when you purchase your home, your home enters a cap program. So the first year, your assessment is based on market. But for each year following the purchase, if you meet the cap criteria, your taxable assessment increases by the Nova Scotia Consumer Price Index in November. This year, the increase of assessments is 1.5% under the cap program. Next slide. Slide two shows the actual market value of the trends. The market residential assessment was 445,000 in 2024 and 489, or sorry, 445 million in 2024 and 489 million in 2025, an increase of 44 million or 9.9%. So this is the value that is actually established without any capping. So our community value is 489 million. The commercial assessment was 61 million in 2024 and 60 million in 2025, a slight decrease of 1.6%. Now Marvin came to my office and asked me why we would be having a decrease, but there was one property that actually was formally assessed as commercial and was changed to residential because of a housing and a housing initiative that was undertaken. So the next slide, the draft budget before council this evening is in balance. The total revenue and expenditures equal just over 11.3 million. So next slide, yes, thank you. The chart shows the various revenue sources that fund the operational budget. The draft budget is funded with no increases in the residential tax rate or commercial tax rate. This draft reflects a sewer rate adjustment of 2.3%, the Nova Scotia CPI. And de-transfer tax is 1.5% with 1% or 325,000 used for future capital and half of a percent is used for operational revenue. And it is estimated to be 162.5,000. Recreation and other rates also have increased by 2.3%, the Nova Scotia CPI. Residential tax fund is 4.95 million, which is 43.8% of the budgeted revenue. The commercial, commercial taxes fund 2.06 of the budget, which is 18.2, 18.2% of the budgeted revenue. Sewer rates fund 1.98 million and are 17, 17.5 related to the cost of operating the wastewater treatment, plant and distribution system, including debt payments and reserve transfers. Other municipal revenue includes fee for sale of services, parking meters, recreational services and fund 1.85 million or 16.4% of the budgeted revenue. Provincial and federal grants equal 473,800 and are 4.2% of the overall revenue. Next slide, Kayla. So our draft, um, budget expenditures are 11 million point 318. The pie chart is a quick summary to show council the percentage of the budget related to our various departmental expenditures. Staff will go into more detail for each of these budgets in the upcoming slides. Just of note, our CMP costs are 1.13 million and education costs are 1.24 million, which equal 20.9% of the total budgeted expenditures. The next slide deals with mandatory expenditures for fiscal 2526. Our mandatory expenditures have increased by 153,000. 98% of that is for education and 53,500 relates to our CMP charges. So if you, can you come down just a tiny bit, Kayla, so that I can see? You'll see that the total change from year over year is 153,000 increase and it is a 6.8% increase overall. So our next slide is is in relation to the general government expenditures, which has a change of 13.2% or just over 142,000. Council honorariums are increasing by CPI of 2.3% and the yearly total increase is 6,200. Wages, wages and benefits have increased by 84,500. There are a total of 40.5 full-time equivalents budgeted in the 2526 budget. This includes both union and non-unionized positions allocated within the town. Water and electric utilities, based on the actual time anticipated to spend on those activities, are offsetting the cost in the operating fund. The allocations are reviewed annually and have been adjusted as necessary in these draft budgets. An additional 35,000 for support for human resource function of our unit and includes the recruitment of a permanent CAO. Review and plans, the new budget line item is included for undertaking a strategic planning or other review that council may wish to undertake in the upcoming fiscal year. Council, it is have also in 2022, 23 approved that low income exemptions would be increased by CPI yearly. And the exemption amounts have been adjusted for this current year by 2.3%. After review, it is felt that the budget amount of 40,000 should cover this program. The, and the different levels are, um, for 2024, if you earn less than 33,540, you get a thousand-dollar exemption. For, uh, if you learn, earn between 34,311 to 40,000, you get a 500-dollar exemption. So it it changes. So it goes from 1,000 to 250. And there's an application process that you can apply for if you hit those exemption levels. And we will ensure that the exemption levels are on our website. The election costs this year have been removed from the budget as this is cyclical in nature and the election costs will reappear in the fourth year. Grants to organizations budget, a grant to the brighter days capital campaign for a total of $20,000 was approved in in 2020. In 2020, and this is our third year of the five-year commitment and it's a $4,000 allocation. This budget also includes $10,000 for the Lunenburg County Wheel Request. Traffic control is also included in this and then there, the grants will also be available for application and approval and will come at a future council meeting. On page 18, other protective services has a budget change of 4.6%. The RCMP budget for is 1,125,900, which is 9%, 9.9% of the budget total. The fire budget has increased by 1.8% or 14,400. Kayla, that's the the next one. The personal protective equipment reserve accounts for most of the increase at $12,000 as the next replacement is scheduled in 2930 and the estimated cost will be 323,200. And I will now turn the presentation over to Tyson to review the transportation and environmental health services.
Thank you again, Kathleen. So transportation services. So these are items like roads and and the functions that Public Works often offers the town. So a percentage change of 4.3% or 64,500. The major changes in this year's budget compared to last year's are the the fuel and equipment and shop supplies. So that's an increase of $20,000. And that's a consequence of just prices in the marketplace, rising fuel, uh, those kinds of things. Uh, we have the parking and traffic study dropping off. So that's, that's $75,000 being removed. Um, we have the wage increases of $101,000. Um, and then we have street lighting and and the miscellaneous supplies, um, some smaller gains there. So with the environmental health, so that's the wastewater treatment and the garbage. We have a percentage change of 9.1% or an increase of 139,300 compared to the previous year. So we have lift station cleaning of $10,000 and increase there. The wage, wage and benefits of $28,000. Uh, sludge disposal of $25,000. So that's, that's the hauling of the sludge from the plant to the disposal site at Why Not Settlement. And then the the biofilter media reserve of $75,000. So this is a, the town has routinely taken contributions for the bio, to build up that bio, biofilter media reserve. The the cost that was budgeted for at the start of of that process over the seven-year cycle, costs have have jumped ahead out of proportion with what that that reserve was taking annually. So I think, I think, and Kathleen, if I'm, if I'm wrong here, you tell me, but I think for a number of years, that was, that was a $10,000 contribution or somewhere in. And I think last year we could see the writing was on the wall a bit and we stepped it up to $25,000. But it was still based on our understanding of where that cost will be to to complete that, uh, that work. Another big jump up this year. So potentially, we could see it step back down next year to to kind of spread it out over the cycle again. But in order for that, that project to happen this year, we we need it, we need that big bump. So I'll turn back over to Kathleen for the community development section.
So as you're aware, Mark is away, so I will do my best to explain his departments for him. He'll be back at one of our budget sessions. So if there are any questions that you have, we can have them addressed or send them off an email. Blockhouse hill planning and upper land development projects have no funding this year as a they are not going to be undertaken this year. Wayfair signage, um, $7,000 has been included in the budget to develop wayfinding signage for town trails and design works. There is an economic impact study was budgeted at 187,000 in 2425. At the January 24th, 23 council meeting, staff proposed to undertake and release an RFP engagement to engage a consultant to undertake an economic impact analysis. The cost is estimated at 75,000 and we have, uh, partially completed that project. Building repairs for, um, this, this section of the budget contains any building that is considered to provide community development services in the community. The old fire hall building conditions assessment was undertaken undertaken in 2425. So there's actually a decrease of 24,000 to that building. The Lunenburg fuel, um, has, at the Academy, has decreased by 14,500. And that was based on a two-year actual estimate. Because we had some furnace work and boiler work done at that, which has meant that we are using less fuel than we had anticipated. There is an increase at the CN station for $27,000. And the other facility that is covered here is the visitor service center. And there's an additional $3,000 for the use for janitorial services at the public washroom. So under the community development, recreation and heritage and culture, the arena repairs, $10,000 is due to the arena repairs, ten thousand dollars, is due to system repairs in the engine room. Wages and benefits have increased by twenty thousand, twenty-seven thousand dollars. The arena electricity has increased by eighty-four hundred, and field maintenance has increased by seventy-two hundred as maintenance work on the track and the field and related consultant work. We also have five thousand dollars in there for a joint UNESCO program. So under Fiscal Services. Fiscal Services include our principal debt financing, reserve transfers, and mandatory provincial education expense. The budget has increased five percent, which is a hundred and thirty thousand. Debencher payments have increased by forty-seven thousand. Reserve transfers have decreased by fifteen thousand, three hundred, and the education contribution has increased by ninety-eight thousand, two hundred. Next slide. This slide relates to the sewer rates, which have increased by two point three percent. The residential rate is including, is increased to seven hundred and thirty-five thousand, thirty-eight dollars or sixteen fifty-three per year. The commercial rate will increase from sixty-eight point six nine cents per one hundred of assessment to seventy point two seven cents. And the church rate will increase from four hundred and twenty-two to four hundred and thirty-one. These reserves pay for the operational costs, also providing funds for sewer operating reserve and sewer debt reserve as we continue to plan for the replacement of the wastewater treatment. The wastewater treatment reserve total will be two hundred and eighty-six thousand, and we will be transferring two hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand to the General Sewer Reserve. And finally, we have our proposed tax rates draft rate slide. We are recommending no increase for residential or commercial. So the residential rate would be one point three seven six cents, and the commercial rate would remain at three point three five eight. And that, I believe, is the conclusion of this part. We're now in Water Capital.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions to Kathleen or Tyson or Jacob on seven point two? Council Babino.
Yes, sorry, just let me find that note. Scroll way down. So this was actually about the cemetery budget. So I see that there's an appropriation from the town as a line item. Can you just explain to me why that is? Like, is that so that it breaks even?
That is correct. You will see in the actual notes to the cemetery budget that we are not recommending an increase in the actual rates this year. But I know that the last couple of years, we've actually recouped a hundred percent of what it has cost to operate that. So last year, I think it was sixty-four hundred dollars, and the year before it was forty-seven hundred dollars. In years past, we had been charging something like thirty-four thousand dollars to the tax rate. So we've tried to actually take that down and make it more affordable to the residents. So that is, that is why that amount is actually in that budget.
Any other questions, comments on the budget? And just the only comment I'd have is, the one thing you hear on the street and actually campaigning was a lot of people don't realize we have a low-income tax relief program. So I think it's very important that when we, when this eventually passes at some time in June, maybe do like a newsletter in the mail, highlighting some of the, or some of the highlights and lowlights of the budget, but really highlighting that low-income tax relief program and how they can go about applying and qualifying for it. Because I, you know, I think that unless people are paying attention, a lot of people don't realize we actually have that. And just putting it on our social media or our website, we've learned in the last year especially that that doesn't cut it. I really think the mail-out went over well a month ago, and I guess something we should continue, and something like that should definitely be put in a mail-out, especially a lot of the elderly people that would, you know, probably think about applying for that in this town would not be on probably Facebook, I wouldn't think. So I think a mail-out is definitely worth, worth its weight in gold.
So one of the things that we do do, the ones that have received it in the past would actually have received and noticed when our interim bills go out. Now, our interim billings will be hitting the mail on Monday, and I'm going, I'm going to send you a note about that tomorrow. But just so that we do do some notification, but that is only good for people that know about it. So yes, I have made a note of that, and we'll pass that along.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, concerns, anyone around the table? Okay, we'll move on to seven point three, Draft Water Utility Capital Budget. Tyson, you're up.
Thank you, your worship. So just to take counsel through the water utility capital budget. So starting, starting with the water treatment plant, we have a proposed project for chlorine scale upgrades. So essentially, the chlorine is one of the key components in the treatment process for our, our water. And we have two, two banks of four cylinders that sort of alternate as, through, through the time the plant is operating. So at the moment, the chlorine is monitored by weighing one of the four cylinders from each bank. So theoretically, that's, that's a great idea. If the chlorine coming out of all four tanks is equal, and there's no debris in any of the hoses and that kind of thing. So to improve the function of the plant, increase safety of our employees, and mitigate wasting chlorine, with, we're proposing this project that would, would add three extra scales to each, each bank. So each tank would have its own scale. It would help us, it would help our operators understand how much chlorine is in the tanks. If they're switching hoses, it's a hazardous substance, so increase the safety there. And it would allow us to know each respective weight of the tank. So kind of maybe gone a little far with my explanation there, but I think it's just important to understand it's, it's a safety item, and it's also a potential cost-saving item for the sixty thousand dollars that we've, we've allowed for there. So moving on to the next slide, we have the project you might have heard of before. They, the repair to the spillway in the dam. So council's pre-approved that one, so that's one point, three one nine million dollars. We have another project that has been, has been on this budget for a few years, and it's a challenging project, but we're gonna, we're gonna get it this year. So it's the raw water pump house waterproofing the foundation. So again, just protecting the infrastructure we have, stopping it deteriorating. These water issues seem to, to be recurring, but it's, it's just part of owning, owning buildings. And then we have the armory's exterior improvements, twenty-five thousand dollars. So that would be, that would be items such as scraping and painting, replacing deteriorated wood on the exterior there, those kinds of items. So in-house work for Public Works, twenty-five thousand dollars. Moving on to the water system itself. So we have the water meter rollout. We have a budget of six hundred thousand dollars for that. Council will notice that's, that's showing to happen over two years, so this would be the first portion of that. We have, the next two items are typical allowances we carry for, for new services for properties, and then replacement of hydrants of twenty thousand dollars. So we have an item, it's called various renewals, but this is the planning and preparation work, so the design and tender preparation for, for future renewals to our existing system. And then we, we have a larger project, which was recommended from the water modeling project, which is the renewal of our transmission line. So that's the line that runs from the plant down Northwest Road, through Newtown, along Blue Nose Drive, and then up to Garden Lots. So the estimate that we had for that, that whole project is fifteen million dollars or in that order. So this would, obviously, with that sort of magnitude, it's going to need to be a multi-phase project. This would just be the initial, the planning and the design and for the first phase of a multi, a multi-design. So you'll see in the, in the spreadsheet, we've kind of got the hundred thousand the first year, and then we're, we're showing larger commitments in, over that five-year period. And, and the red, the red loop that's identifying that that's, this is a project that we should be seeking partnership or assistance with. So I, I don't see that project being completed within this five-year, that this is a longer term. But it would provide other opportunities for improvements to, to town infrastructure when, when that main renewal is being upgraded. So also offers, offers that, that silver lining. So that concludes the, the Water Utility Capital Budget.
Are there any questions on the Water Utility Capital Budget? Okay, Council, Council Greek first.
Just a quick question through the chair, Tyson. Just curious, for the upgrade or the repair work to the armories, just curious why that's part of the water budget? If you could just elaborate a little bit.
Through the chair, so the Armory's building itself is considered a water utility asset. So I don't, I don't know the background as to why it is, but it, that, it just appears in this, this portion of the budget.
And it is on our capital water asset ledger, so that is why that it would be in the water section.
Excellent, thank you for confirming.
Council Babino.
So the, the raw water pump house, the waterproofing of the foundation. I guess I'm just confused as to why it's not already waterproofed. Is it just an age of the building thing? Like, is it, do you know, do we know how old that pump house is?
Through the chair, I can't explain why, why we're seeing the impacts of the water infiltration that we, we are. But the pump house is a super important asset that those pumps are. I feel, I feel bad, because I know the person over my shoulder probably knows the answer better than I do, as, as to the age. But, but yeah, it's just something that, again, the impacts of the water are showing, and it's not something that we feel we should be ignoring. So I don't know if it's always been this way, or it's something that's recently appeared this way, but it's something that needs attention. And, you know, depending on your perspective, a twenty-five thousand dollar commitment to execute this would provide that, that value to that asset.
Thank you, anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to seven point four, Draft Water Utility Operating Budget.
So this is a balanced budget of showing revenues of one point seven million and expenditures of one point seven million, and it's a one point four percentage change, and the change is twenty-four thousand, seven hundred. The town's last water rate application was in twenty-twenty-two. The above revenue reflects the April first, twenty-twenty-four rates as approved by the Nova Scotia Utility and Review Board. The changes to the water operating budget are water testing. We are required to have testing done at specific sites, and the budget for that is eight thousand. Our increased cost for power and sewer are eighty-two hundred. The power is Nova Scotia Power, is the, the water treatment plant is not on our system. Maintenance of plants and vehicles is the decrease of a thousand. Wages and benefits have increased by forty-three thousand, eight hundred. Depreciation expense has increased by thirteen thousand, three hundred. Our debenture expense has decreased by sixteen hundred. Insurance costs and Nova Scotia Utility and Review Board registration has increased by ninety-two hundred. The water dividend has not been budgeted this year as we were not able to balance the budget with that figure there. So, and our fuel costs have also reduced by fifty-two hundred dollars.
Thank you. Any questions for the Water Utility Operating Budget for Kathleen? Council Dofni.
Okay, Kathleen, bear with me. Under materials and mains, can you explain to me exactly what that means? Maintenance of plant and mains.
Through the chair, I think I'm better at answering this rather than Kathleen. So if, I believe I understand that the line we're looking at, so it's, it's lined zero five dash two dash forty-four dash three one zero zero. So the, the materials, the mains, so that would be the, the water main that is the, the water distribution system that serves the town. So that, that item itself would be items like pipe and, and different fittings like, like tees or bends or the mechanical restraints that we use. So that's basically our, our budget line for those kinds of items.
Okay, I'll stay with you, Tyson. Water leak investigations. Two-part. Do we use a certain company? Or nobody on staff can do that? Or, or what's the training involved in that?
So through the chair, we tend to use a contractor to help us identify the risk. It's someone that, that has a lot of skill and, and I would say talent in identifying. That, they have listening equipment and techniques that, that can be taught. We don't have anyone on staff that can currently perform it. We do have somewhat similar equipment, but not as new and not as, not as fine-tuned, I would, in my opinion. As, as, so this person's experience, I think, is a real asset that allows us to identify the leaks faster and identify the area. And we've had excellent success on this person identifying an area where we should dig, and the leak itself being relatively close. So we're also saving on reinstatement. So we're also saving on reinstatement costs, time for the crew, working efficiently, minimizing disruption to traffic. It it kind of snowballs from there. So that's that's how we've chosen to do it in recent times.
Anybody else? Any other, oh, councillor Babanov.
Kathleen, can you just elaborate a little bit or explain a little bit the the line item on your presentation about the water dividend and it being removed from the budget?
So I think it was three years ago, we were, no, it was actually longer than that. We did a financing scheme for fire trucks. And one of the things that we had identified as potentially helping with assisting for debt charges at the fire trucks in the future was that we would start to take some of the money that we had collected for the hydrant fee and put that in a reserve for future fire trucks. This year, because of the magnitude of cost increases, we were unable to do that. And we are actually looking in, I believe it is November that we will be starting or we we will be chatting with council at that point in time in regards to going to the Utility and Review Board for a rate increase with the Water Utility. That is something that they had told us when we went for our last study, that this is the year that we should be targeting to be back in the window to have our rates reviewed.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to seven point five, the Draft Electric Utility Capital Budget.
Just have to find it. So the electric capital budget is as presented to you at the March eleventh, twenty twenty-five council meeting, where you actually approved two point three million dollars of the three point two for the Green Street double-circuit project and for six hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars and the feeder upgrade extension for the balance. Darren Lamont, our senior engineer from SEMA, will be in attendance at the May thirteenth council meeting to review the capital improvements included in this budget. So at that point in time, he will be going line for line and explaining what projects will be undertaken this year and what the purpose of the projects are. And that will be coming up in the the near future. So as you can see, the electric budget is capital budget is three point two million. And as I indicated, that will be discussed with you at a later date. The operating fund has revenue of seven point six million and expenditures of eight point five million. So there's a net budgeted deficit of eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand at this point in time. It's a five point nine two percent change and it is four hundred and seventy-five thousand eight hundred. Just as a reminder, the Electric Utility Operating Budget is the same as was included in the general rate application submission approved by council on March twenty-fifth. The revenue was calculated at the current rates as approval for the rate changes will be considered by the Nova Scotia Energy Board on January twenty-second here in our council chamber. I believe so July twenty-second, did I? Oh, well, sorry. Yes, it's July twenty-second. So when the rates are approved, if if we are granted approval, the eight hundred and fifty-six thousand that is shown there will be reduced. We're not sure, it'll depend upon when they are actually approved by the UARB, but they will be less than the amount that is actually shown in the presentation this evening.
Thank you. Does anyone any questions on the capital operating budget? I know we just did this about a month ago. There will be an electric expert here, I guess, in two weeks' time, if we want to hold off any questions that we have at that time. I mean, if there's finance questions we have, we can certainly ask Kathleen finance questions. But I think we'd be better served asking the electrical questions when the electrical person is here. But any questions for Kathleen at this time? Councillor Dofne.
Kathleen, can you describe for me the uncollectible accounts? Like, what are uncollectible accounts and how's that break down?
The uncollectible, uncollectible accounts are as you would think they are. It is a charge that if we are going to take accounts and have them written off, we would bring them forward. You would approve it and that is an expense because you have to, when you actually billed the person for their billing, you booked a revenue. So now you are not collecting that revenue, so you have to expense it against the utility. I know that there are, we are stepping up our game and when it comes to collections on the utility this year. We try to work with our customers as we always do, but there are some that we are actually going to have to pursue and there may be some collection costs associated with that as well.
Oh, anybody else? Okay, thank you very much again. And May thirteenth meeting come with your technical questions if you have any. We'll move on to seven point seven. There's a recommendation in front of us that Tyson, I think you're up.
Thank you, Your Worship. So this this report, it it builds on one of the items that we've already discussed relating to the Lunenburg Academy Roof Repairs. So this is looking for a committee, the whole recommendation from council. So that the committee, the whole direct staff to proceed with issuing the tender for the Lunenburg Academy Roof Repairs Project as outlined in this staff report and that this item return to council at the next regular meeting for consideration of preapproval in the twenty-five, twenty-six capital budget. So the background on this item is uh, staff are aware of active leaks in the Lunenburg Academy roof. In June twenty twenty-four, the consultant was awarded the ROP for a condition assessment, design and tender document preparation. And then they also have the quality assurance aspects of the roof repair scope. So at the moment, we have the ninety percent tender drawings, the design. We're expecting that issue for tender set any any day now, which will allow us to proceed. And that's that's why we're bringing this report to council this evening, to not have to wait until May thirteenth, looking for this approval, to keep going with the tendering process, mitigate any potential delays there. So in terms of the tender itself, the the condition assessment identified the roof as in fair condition, but it did identify some areas of concern. So those are the the membrane valleys generally near the dormers and towers which require replacement. In order to perform that work, a lot of the shingles have to be removed to get the access there, meaning that when you're creating the access that's required to get to those spots and incurring the cost of scaffold and that kind of thing, maybe it's a good time to take care of the roof shingles as well, rather than than put it off and then have to incur that considerable expense again. So the construction scope for the project is replacing the existing cedar roofing at all slope roof areas, gables, hips and towers with factory-finished cedar shingles, replacement of the valleys and flashings with new lead-coated copper materials and then targeted replacement of cedar shingles and improving the flashing at the the Mansard elevation. So the Mansard elevation is is that steeper pitch on the building there. So by performing this scope, we're looking at adding to the lifespan of the roof, estimated by the consultant between twenty-five and thirty years. So a significant gain there. Preventative maintenance would still be required during that period, just as as the nature of the materials being used. So looking to continue this process, we're looking to take advantage of that more competitive tendering period and mitigate the delays. The supply chain items are prevalent now. We're dealing with limited suppliers within the Canadian market itself, which which is a concern right at the moment that everyone's dealing with. So we're hoping to get the tender out in in early May to do our best to mitigate it. Uh, we're also mindful of the fact that town has applied for a grant, this partnership that I referred to earlier with Parks Canada, where the work would need to be completed by March thirty-one, twenty twenty-six. Uh, nature of the work means we really only have the summer, if it's a good fall. But um, once, once we get into December twenty twenty-five, we're we're pretty much at our March thirty-one, twenty twenty-six date. But the majority of that work. So mitigating those risks. We've had really good collaboration with the Academy Foundation throughout this process. They've been involved. They reviewed reviewed the consultant's recommendations for the repairs. They were involved in the grant application to Parks Canada. So we we worked together on that and they've also made a commitment to contribute to the repairs, which is excellent. So in terms of the the budgeting items, just to give council some awareness, so they 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 can follow that. This is based off the Class C estimate received from Fishburne Sheridan, who's the consultant. Uh, there's a there's a summary at the top of the third page of the report. So uh, the Class C estimate was for approximately six hundred thousand dollars. We've carried a a twenty-five percent contingency based on that being a a Class C estimate to get to that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget. So as I said, the Academy Foundation has committed to supporting this work, setting an upper limit for their contribution of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we've also applied to Parks Canada for that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which would be the upper limit with the program that we've we've applied to. And that let, that leaves two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the town to contribute. That concludes the report. So again, just just looking for council to say we can keep proceeding with with the tender at this point.
Thank you, Tyson. Is someone prepared to move the recommendation in front of us? Councillor Strong?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion that the committee of the whole direct staff to proceed with issuing the tender for the Lunenburg Academy Roof Repairs Project as outlined in the April seventeenth, twenty twenty-five staff report and that this item return to council at the next regular meeting for consideration of preapproval in the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six capital budget.
So it's removed and seconded by councillor Fullerton. Any further discussion or question on the motion? Seeing no questions or discussion, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, motion carry unanimous. Thank you very much. So now we're moving on to eight, which is our your opportunity to stand up and give us some questions, concerns or or comments on the public, on the budget. So does anyone in the public like to stand up? Just stand up because we didn't have the sheet up. So you want to go first? Okay, go ahead Duncan. Right over to the mic and
Thank you very much. Duncan Crowell, forty-five, McDonald Street. And I'd like to thank staff for putting these documents together. I know it's a lot of work and like thank council for this opportunity to comment. And I have to say, I'm disappointed in in the turnout. You you deserve better than this. I want to talk a bit about tonight about the capital budgets. Uh, as you know, back in twenty twenty-three, the CAO at the time, Jamie Doyle, presented a financial report to council and to town residents, which looked at the financial picture for capital expenditures over a five to fifteen-year time span. And he detailed something like forty-six million dollars in capital expenditures over that five to fifteen-year period. If some of you will recall, at the time, some folks in town questioned the accuracy of those estimates, suggesting that they were inflated. Tonight, of course, we have the capital budgets for the town, the Water Utility and the Electric Utility. And if you look at the five-year forecasts for those three entities, you'll see it's a little over fifty-five million dollars. So I hope all of us in the community can agree that the magnitude of the capital expenditures that we are going to need to improve our aging infrastructure are large. I think it's important for council in the wider context and for all-town residents to convey as part of the, as part of this budgetary process, the magnitude of these capital expenditures over the next five years, so that there are no surprises and so that we're all on the same page. I'm begging your indulgence to speak at a higher level in a longer term on the budgetary process. I won't speak specifically to any specific item in these budgets. I think it'll be important for council as well to have a fulsome discussion about how we're going to manage this level of capital spending. Both the deputy mayor and councillor Dofne mentioned the word prioritization tonight. And that is a an important word, I believe, given the magnitude of these capital expenditures. My personal opinion, for what it's worth, is that we need to be focusing all of our attention and resources on our core infrastructure, water, wastewater and the electrical grid. I just, I, at this moment, it's not clear to me that we can do everything. And I think we need to concentrate our efforts on those core infrastructures and upgrading those core infrastructures. I think it's important for town residents as well to get a sense from all of us, how we're going to pay for these capital expenditures. We know tonight, for instance, the proposal is that we not increase tax rates. I don't know how much longer that can be sustainable, given the magnitude of these capital expenditures. And I believe we should begin a fulsome discussion, a frank discussion about tax increases. I think we need to address town assets, surplus lands. Have some discussion about do we need to start or consider selling something to meet these capital expenditures? I think we should have a fulsome discussion about that. I have some niggling concerns about borrowing. If we look at this fiscal year, for instance, we have capital expenditures of just over ten million dollars. Five point one million dollars is going to be borrowed, I believe, if you add it up. I was, I was a little late, so I missed Kathleen's remarks about what that means for our debt servicing charge.
So we have done some calculations, Duncan, regarding our debt ratios this year. So we had five percent in the budget and that included the new borrowing that we've just done. The one point four million that we're looking at adding to that this year will take us up to about seven percent. When we add on our wastewater treatment plant, that will take us up to eleven. And when when you think about it, though, you can't just look at debt. You have to look at debt being paid off, debt being added, how we can finance things. So it's a much bigger figure than just the percentage.
Thank you, Kathleen. Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that. And I understand how, you know, borrowing and debt can go up and down. But, you know, you know, if we just kind of extrapolate from this year, it's going to be probably around ten million dollars in capital expenditures every it's going to be probably around ten million dollars in capital expenditures every year for the next five years. And I think it's highly likely that we'll be borrowing every year, given that scenario.
Some of the things that you'll see that are circled. We know that we have to undertake them, but we also know that we have to look for funding sources. So for instance, the, the force main, is it what it's called that you come in from?
Transmission.
The transmission line. We may be able to get funds from the Green Municipal Fund. You know, there's all, you always have to be digging and looking for the big project money, which is what we, we've been trying to do.
No, I appreciate that. And I know you've been working really hard to do that. And you've had some success and will probably have some success in the future. But, you know, the thing about external funding is it's, it's, it's never guaranteed. And it's, you know, the discretion of, you know, political whims. And so you, you're never sure what's going to happen. At any rate, I just wanted to throw those general comments out for council to consider. And, and if we can have some, I think town residents would be really interested. I know I'm interested in, in, in council's view, views about those things. Thanks very much.
Thank you Duncan. I'd just like to add that I'm probably a little bit more disappointed than you are with attendance tonight. There are a lot of meetings. I'd like to see this many people in the audience. But quite frankly, for budget discussions of this magnitude and the amount we've promoted it and the amount we've encouraged public engagement, it is very disappointing and I, and I appreciate your conversation or your questions about wholesome discussions. I just hope if we have some meetings in the future, engagement sessions, that we do get more participation from the public than, than we do at this time. And again, just a few comments quickly. Our debt ratio, if it's around ten or eleven thousand, eleven percent at the end, it's usually by the time we get our books back and we move money over, it's down to like eight or seven. That's how it's been working the last couple of years, I understand. And based on some of the people I've talked to and other municipalities, it doesn't make it any better, but we are much better off than a lot of our, you know, other communities are at this point. Doesn't help the situation. But I, but I, I guess I appreciate staff's effort to keep that debt ratio down at least around ten percent. And the only last thing I'd say is your point you made about former C A O's Doyle, Doyle's comments about the fifty or sixty million dollars or forty five million, you are one hundred percent correct, but he was mainly focusing on, I think, the asset, the buildings. If I remember that report correctly at the time, it was on all the buildings around town. Our fifty five million, it, again, the number doesn't change, doesn't make it any better. But we're focusing on the three priorities you've mentioned, which I, I totally agree with. We're focusing on water, wastewater and, and electrical grid. So again, our monies, you know, that we're talking about spending now over the next couple of years are based on those three priorities. And I can't agree more that those are three priorities that we have to really take serious. And you want to put your hand up again?
If you exceed the provincial indices of fifteen, you are limited in what you are allowed to borrow and how you have to operate. The twelve percent is a guiding light or guiding line that we utilize that has been approved by council. It, however, we all do know that the fifteen percent is the line that we have to ensure that we're not getting close to.
Thank you. Any other comments, Deputy Mayor?
I just want to make a comment because it, it seems to me when these, these issues are raised and we lump together our water utility and our electric utility, along with all the other infrastructure that, that is financed through our tax rates and through, you know, the town operating capacity, that there's that, it generates confusion in the public. The water utility is a separate, has a separate budget and it has separate revenues and operates separately, as does the electric utility. It is an entity onto itself. It falls under our jurisdiction currently and, and we are responsible for it. But, but to not recognize that there are clear divisions and sources of revenue and means of operating, you know, for example, to the point of the requirements for, you know, you reference potential need for tax increases. Well, and, and in the same breath, you know, the, the capital expenditures required for the electric utility. Well, that's a separate thing. We are replying for an increase to electrical rates to address that very concern. So I just think it's important not to confuse and, and to, to understand how, how the various capital expenditures fall within different categories and different systems and very clearly defined in our budget documents, I think.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I forgot. I mean, I was here at the utility review a year and a half, two year, two, over two years ago now. And the comment was we'd never be able to afford the electric utility upgrades because of our debt ratio. We, we exceed that. Well, the electric utility upgrades don't impact our debt ratio on our general debt ratio. It's funded completely as a separate entity on its own. So that's something that a lot of people don't realize. We really are one corporation with a couple of different businesses within that corporation that's budget differently and financed differently. Doesn't make the bottom line any more attractive or the fact that we have to borrow money any better. But it's just a little less confusing. Some people don't understand that. I know you folks do, but some people out there don't. So I just thought I'd, you know, thank you Deputy Mayor for highlighting that. Teresa.
Okay, there we go. Hi, everyone. My name's Teresa. I won't be as articulate as Duncan, but this is very, first of all, thank you for taking on this work that it feels like forty years worth of work that we're going to try to do in five years by the looks of the budget. And so it feels really daunting to read it all and to, yeah, though it may be a conglomerate of, of municipality and different utilities, it's, it still is about fifty five million dollars over the next five years, which is a lot of money. And, and I may be wrong on that, but I think it's, you know, if we're, if we're trying to get the story of, of what's going on here and what we're trying to tackle, it's, it's a lot. So I think it's, it feels a little daunting as a resident to think that we're going to take so much on so quickly. I think it's long overdue, so it needs to be done. So there's, there's difficult choices ahead, I think. And, and so I think what I also feel as I'm trying to understand this more, and this was, you know, somewhat helpful, I'll have to spend more time with it to hear the discussion. And thanks to staff for, for all of the explanation and walking through it. What I, I'm still having trouble though, understanding, because I believe I understand the process is that council is to approve just a one year budget. Is that correct? Operating in capital budgets for just one year. But we really do need to look at this five year plan because these are multi-year endeavors, right, to achieve these things. And some, some of these big infrastructure projects may not even be completed in five years. They may go beyond, right? So we really, it's really important to look at the big picture and I appreciate that. What I feel is perhaps would be really helpful for us to understand what does this mean for us? And then how can we prioritize if we were to find that we're not able to do absolutely everything that's there? And I would say that I agree with Duncan is, is, is that the core infrastructure and basic services are number one. We will not operate as a town if we do not have electricity, if we do not have water and sewer. We can ride over some bumpy roads. I don't like them any better than anyone else. But I think, you know, there's some prioritization that may need to happen at some point. And then also, how do we pay for all of this? I, I'm not comfortable at this point and I don't envy your task of determining whether or not you can approve, how we can move forward with a budget of this magnitude without understanding how we're going to finance it over the longer term. And I understand that there are unknowns. You don't know what funding is, is going to come and so on. But some scenario planning, I think, would be helpful over the long term so that we could see if we were to get these types of grants, if we were to raise these kinds of dollars, if we were to tweak the tax rates, how would all of those things play out? If we're to keep all of our assets and continue to care for them? If we're to, if there are assets that we decide, you know, we may have to make some tough decisions. I don't know what they might be, but that's for you as councillors to decide. But I just feel like for you to make these decisions and for me as a taxpayer, I would like to know how are we going to, you know, what does it look like over the next five years? So that you can do that prioritization and understand what, you know, how are you going to approve these things? So that's my first take on it, but I'll have more in two weeks, I hope.
Thank you very much. I think our biggest problem, probably the same as every municipality as well, is there's always funding out there provincially and federally, but it gets announced annually. You have to apply annually for most of it. You don't know what they're going to announce. You don't know how much funding they're going to put in certain programs until they pass their budget. So it's almost, we're, we're connected in a lot of ways with a lot of the funding, outside funding. Now, I know we have to have a plan to have what we need, but you can never count on the dollars in the bank until they actually announce the programs and announce when you get it. So that makes it very difficult. You're right to plan, say, five years out. Because who knows what programs and what government will be in power in five years' time, right? Thank you. Just, go ahead, Counselor Strong.
I'm not sure whether you printed off what was on, online or the agenda package, but we do have a sense of the five year plan in front of us. But the scenarios, I think the scenario thing might be a, a good exercise for the community to be involved in. Maybe we could hear from staff on whether that's feasible or.
Staff do look at a number of scenarios in development budgets. And so it's kind of a, an ongoing process. We don't have all the answers, but we do look at different scenarios. And we, we also have to be conscious of change in environment and emergencies that might come up that we're not aware of. So we can't, we can't like fine tune budgets out too much in the distance. We can't commit future councils to budgets. So we need to, we need to take a lot of different things into consideration when we're, we're looking at. And yeah, a, a five year capital plan is, is a, a good tool to use. And, but things like grant programs and other sources of funding that may come along that we're not aware of. So it's, it's hard to plan how you're going to finance all that, all of the work that needs to be done. But you have to take a lot of different considerations forward when you're looking at an annual budget. So it, it, it is a, quite a task.
Thank you. Anybody else? Jesse?
Hi, thank you. Thank you to staff for preparing the information tonight. And thank you for council for making the opportunity available to speak to the budget tonight. Yeah, I have a few specific questions that I don't expect that there's an answer to tonight because they're pretty specific, but I think that most of these are of a general interest. And it would be great if we could hear an answer before the next meeting. I was wondering what capital expenses, other than the new sidewalk on Star Street, are we expecting that we may need to commit to regarding the site on Star Street for the new daycare center? During the conversations around the daycare center development, there were conversations around potentially other mitigating factors with the site, like actually leveling the land or moving things around with the electric utility, the substation. So I just didn't see anything other than the sidewalk directly addressed in budget. It would be great to know about that. For the item in the electric utility draft budget for two million dollars over the next two years for the Green Street new double circuit, what specific new initiatives will this work support? And how, if at all, will it support our existing grid? Similarly, for the one point seven million in that budget for the feeder upgrade and extension to Dufferin Street, what specific initiatives would that work support? I think it's really helpful to understand what are the projects that are like new expansions to the grid versus upgrading the infrastructure that we have right now. For sidewalks, I think people would like to know why is Linden Avenue the only street that is scheduled to have a new sidewalk built in the next five years, other than Star Street? It'd be good to know about how we're prioritizing sidewalks overall. And it's good to see that we're approaching the repairs to Town Hall. Back in twenty twenty three, we were talking about how there were potentially going to be a grant from Parks Canada that we were pursuing, that we were seeing was potentially cover most of the cost. It would be great to know where that could potentially be at. I feel like there's a lot of grants that we apply for that we don't always hear back about or that are in progress for a long time. And it's good to know, to have more transparency on the kinds of ways that we're trying to pursue outside sources of funding. Those are the questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jesse. And we'll get, staff can answer some of those maybe tonight. The electrical ones, the more technical ones, we'll get those done on the thirteenth when the electrical experts here. So Kathleen, you want to?
Jesse, that grant that was applied for, for the Town Hall, we were not successful in obtaining that.
Thank you. Sometimes people say that we aren't always pursuing the opportunities we are. So when we don't hear about things like that, sometimes, you know, there's, there's gossip or things like that. So thank you. It's good to hear when it's not successful. We've made our best effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Tyson?
Through the chair, I can perhaps address the, the question about the sidewalks there. So the new sidewalk, I think the, the Star Street one makes, makes sense to support the daycare site. That's why that one was added. Linden, Linden Avenue is an existing, it's sort of in the, the core of the town, sort of the connection between new town and old town where there's, there is a pathway, but I don't, it's not accessible. It's not seasonal, like in seasonal conditions, it's not available. So that would, that was just a, an aspect to the town's A T network that there appears to be a shortfall in. In some ways, it would be great if we could have sidewalks on every road. It would, it would certainly increase safety, but it would also increase maintenance. There's the upfront construction costs, there's the ongoing maintenance that every time we get into a winter, winter conditions, we're out there with our sidewalk plow, either salting or plowing or both. And at the moment, the town operates with one sig, single sidewalk plow and generally just one, one operator. So if we're looking and, and that, that employee does, does an excellent job. And I, I think, I think we all know who I'm talking about, Brian Church. He's a, he's a warrior in that thing. But increasing, increasing the network and, and those kinds of, you increase the commitment because in those, those winter conditions, they're hazardous, right? So there is a certain obligation to, to get to these things in a, a timely manner. So there's a lot more focus on renewals. I think it carries the, the stretch on Victoria. Just looking ahead, those aspects, Victoria from green around to, to the crosswalk we've just upgraded with the rapid flashing beacon sort of up, up past the independent to the, the crosswalk near the hardware store. That, that one is, if we're, if we're talking about accessibility and those aspects, that one is, is not in great condition. So we're looking at improving those aspects. So needs to be a balance, but we're also cognizant of adding, adding new infrastructure. adding new infrastructure adds to the responsibilities we're kind of talking about tonight as well.
Thank you. Anybody else want to... Deputy Mayor?
Just raised a question about, I mean, there was an act of transportation study done quite a number of years ago. And it identified gaps in connectivity for pedestrian access around town. And there were a few little things. I remember, you know, the end of Green Street connecting to High Street, for example, that had been a gap for years. And that was, you know, just a short strip of sidewalk that made the connection possible and other things like that. So I just, I have no idea, you know, if any, how many or any of the other or beyond. The recommendations may still be valid and if that's still a reference document at all for public work staff?
Through the chair, I think those documents are really useful at identifying those shortfalls in our existing network. Again, it comes back to this, where is the priority for council and the town? It'd be nice to have everything, right? But as the C A O talked about, we've got to identify those things, mitigate risks. And it's a real balancing act. So that's been staff's approach. If there's a particular location or council has a particular focus, then we can adapt to that. It's trying to bring a balanced approach, though, and not overobligate ourselves.
Thank you. Anybody else around the table? Okay, I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank the big crowd here tonight for coming and, you know, bringing the questions and comments forward. It's greatly appreciated. Staff will go back and look at some of the things that were brought up and we'll hope to have, you know, maybe some tweaks made by the 13th if there was anything made tonight to do any tweaks. But again, I don't know how many more times I can promote it from this chair. But if you're talking to your friends, family, neighbors, if they really want something to do on May 13th, the doors are open here, Town Council chambers, and it's another public budget session. So again, I hope that people are watching tonight more than are here and are taking notes, making notes and maybe, and again, they can email in their comments as well. But as far as I know, we haven't got any emailed in comments as well. So, you know, again, folks, this is the most important document we'll be dealing with every year. So it'd be nice to have some input from our citizens. We tend to get 50 people here at some meetings. So this is the meeting that you can really make an impact if you come and make a comment. So again, thank you very much for those of you that did get up and speak and attend tonight. So we'll move on to number nine, which is notice of motions, information requests and council reports. We'll start on the left this time. Councillor Fullerton, do you have anything? Councillor Greek? Councillor Babinow? Councillor Strong? I'll go to deputy mayor then, then back. Deputy Mayor? Okay, and councillor Dofne?
Apparently I need to say something. So goodbye to my habs tomorrow night.
Okay, and there's nothing for closed session. So there's nothing in closed session. So a motion for adjournment is due. Moved by councillor Fullerton. Now you don't need a second. Meeting adjourned. Go leaves go.